I'd like to call the order of the City Council meeting for June 18th, 2012. Roll call, Alderman Rivera, Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
Alderman Beedling.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
I entertain a motion to set a chairman pro tem.
So move that Alderman Cunningham be mayor pro tem.
Second.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for bringing me in as mayor pro tem. First, we did the roll call already. Second, as opposed to motions cited, I have asked Alderman Newsome to lead us in prayer. Can we all please rise?
Father, I just want to thank you for this day. Thank you for allowing us to see the day that we've never seen before. I ask that you will protect our police and fire, those that are here to serve and protect our community. I ask that your mercy and grace be with each and every one of them. I ask that you will be with each and everyone that's shut in, our family members that are sick. I ask that you would go in and heal their bodies. I ask, Father God, that you would lead and guide us and direct us as we conduct the business of this city. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I do not have any mayor's comments, nor does the mayor have any comments to dish out. Next on the agenda is audience time. First on the list is Mr. Marvin Reddick, 320 Oak Street, Waukegan, Illinois. Mr. Reddick, can you please come to the podium? Just a reminder, there's a three-minute limit on all public speaking. Thank you, sir.
Marvin Reddick, 320 Oak Street, Waukegan. I'm here tonight to ask all Aldemans, my family and I are asking for an investigation on the Waukegan Police Department. I have some statements here that are falsified by Detective Mike Teller. I have contacted the chief of police, he do know about this. Actually, I'm going to-
Mr. Reddick, and I don't mean to interrupt you, however, what we don't want to do is not use names.
Oh, okay.
When we do those things, if you need to give something either to myself as the chair or even the chief, you can do that, but we ask that you not use names, okay?
No problem.
Thank you, sir.
But we are asking for an investigation. We feel that they railroaded my son. I can't understand how you have a 911 call and get rid of a 911 taping while a case is going on. Here we have a statement where the detective typed, but he can't show us where he copied anything from. This is a statement he made up on his own. I'm really asking you guys to really look into this situation, and I really feel if you look into this situation, you will see exactly what I'm talking about. My son have circled on the 17th of September '09, everything he didn't say is right here. And if you look at it, you can tell where the handwriting started to change. If this detective did not do this, then he know who did. His name is the only one on everything. He also was allowed to interrogate my son without no witnesses, no video, no anything to back up what he was saying. So yes, I'm taking this very serious. They good with putting me down and putting me in the newspaper, and I never responded to anything they said about me. But now you messing with my son, and these guys are trying to send an innocent young man to prison, someone who's never had no police contact, never been in jail, and for him to be a dangerous man. He was out for two years while this case was going on without no leg monitor. Call when you leave, call when you get back. That was it. Not a cash bond. They let him out for two years while this case was going on, and during that time, not any police contact whatsoever. So yes, we're asking for an investigation to be done on the Waukegan Police Department and that detective, well, basically those detectives, the officers who supported this wrongdoing. So that's it. I would like to leave these papers with you.
No problem. Thank you. What you can do is bring that to me, the chair, I would then give that to the clerk, and the clerk would disseminate that to the right department. Is that correct, Mr. Motley? All right. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, just a point of order, sir. Chief, I heard him say you were aware of this. Is this an ongoing investigation? Because we shouldn't even be involved in this then, sir.
He was convicted.
Yes, sir, it's ongoing investigation.
My son has been convicted.
He was convicted.
You're talking about the disciplinary matter. You said the chief knew about it, any type of discipline you asked for.
Well, he knew about it since 2009.
Okay. All right. It's ongoing, we can't get involved in this, sir.
Well, you got the papers and-
And we'll turn it over, and then we'll have Mr. Motley do the most appropriate thing here, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Sir.
Thank you. No problem.
Thank you, Alderman Valco. Next on the list is Brother Chris Blanks, 409 Oak Street, Waukegan, Illinois.
Citizens Council, Brother Blanks, 409 Oak Street, Black Abolition Movement for the Mind in Action, Action Network, Lake County. Issue I'm about to address, it comes at a, this issue that I'm about to address and that must be addressed, it comes at a very awkward time, however, it must be addressed. On Friday, May 18th, at approximately 6:50 PM, as I was eastbound on Belvedere, approaching the intersection of Lewis Avenue, I observed police officers which had a red van pulled over in the northbound lane of Belvedere, just right across from the Belvedere Mall on the side of the Belvedere Park. So what happened after that, I pulled into the parking lot just in observation, just, you know, seeing what was going on. So as I sit, and I just observed at a good 40 yards away, a distance away, what I saw, I noticed two officers, four officers actually, that was posted, two each on each side of the van. At that particular time, I noticed the driver that exited the vehicle, and I noticed the pit bull, which also exited the vehicle, on, I believe the driver, I believe on the passenger side. So however, what happened after that was, it was four officers. There was one officer, a white male officer, which had his cap turned to the back, that was a short male officer, short, black hair, like, maybe I had like a little 5:00 o'clock shadow going, you know, once I got close, and then there was a taller officer with dark hair. So what happened is, at that particular time, as I observed, one driver got out of the car, and the taller officer approached, the taller officer walked him to the back of the car, to the back of the red van. And I guess he was taking pictures of his, it looked like the gentleman that they was taking pictures of was a Hispanic gentleman, and they was taking tattoos and everything. And then the pit bull, the pit bull was on the passenger side, so the guy with the best, with the cap turned to the back, he had the pit bull dangling the pit bull on the leash, and just kind of playing with the pit bull, so to speak. And at that particular point, the guy that was taking the pictures shortly after that, you know, they walked around to the side where the pit bull was. So to try to cut through the chase of this, eventually what happened was, the pit bull got off the leash. As I said, this is on the side of the park, and the pit bull went down, the pit bull got off the leash, went down the side of the sidewalk filled with people, and off into the park. I took issue with that, but the thing is, that troubles me most is that when I approached the officers to ask them about it, because what happened, what happened after that was the taller officer, or the short officer, he got into the driver's car. Once he got into the driver's car, he drove it around the block, I mean, he drove it over into the Belvedere parking lot, right? And the taller officer with the dark hair followed behind him. Now, after that, the guys chased one of the officers with the hat, the Hispanic officer, I might say, was searching the car, there was a Hispanic officer too. So as he searched the car, he got out of the car and he went down, I know the timing, I know the timing, so I'm just trying to get to the point here. But the bottom line is, when I got and went and asked the officer, was this SOP? Because number one, you got a, you got a pit bull running through the park, and then after that, they chasing the pit bull, the one officer's driving the car around through the parking lot, maybe to get it off the street, I don't know, giving the benefit of the doubt. But when I approached the officers and I asked them what was happening, was this SOP? And those of you not familiar with SOP, standard operating procedures. They basically, at that point in time, the problem that I have is the officers lied. They told me that the dog jumped out of the car as a routine stop. I'd watched as the dog actually exited the car with the guy. So the thing is, they lied, the point is, they lied, and I'm just thinking right now, in this time, while officers are being questioned on integrity, on integrity and being honest, I don't think the city can really have any room for officers lying or being untrustworthy. I mean, you know, I had my cellphone, one of the reasons I brought my cellphone with me, so when things like this come up, you know, I don't end up looking like I'm trying to make a complaint against the police. Number one, I think it was wrong that the pit bull got off the leash. Number two, they didn't have to lie. I have the paper here, I'm going to file a complaint. I don't want to take up a whole lot of time and run over my three minutes. I want to respect the rules, but then I want to follow up with this complaint with the chief, because I think right now, it's too sensitive as you rebuilding, as you rebuilding the time and rebuilding the trust with your citizens, you don't need renegade police officers who are not going in the direction of this office. Thank you. I followed up with the chief. I know, yes, I was kind of running on, you might not understand what I'm saying, but chief, I'll talk to you about it.
Thank you, Mr. Blanks. Next up is Loretta Pable at 434 Hickory, Waukegan, Illinois. And I did pronounce it right, correct?
No.
Uh-oh. I apologize.
No problem. It's Loretta Pable.
Pable. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. "All it is necessary for evil to triumph is for good men to do nothing." That Edmund Burke quote from the 1700s could easily have been written about the Waukegan City Council. I was here on April 16th and implored you to act boldly to combat crime and blight in this city. I detailed the recent spate of crime in my near-north neighborhood. Since that time, older adults have been thrown down to the pavement and robbed while grocery shopping in broad daylight. My garage was broken into, and subsequently, four days later, my car was stolen. Additionally, as we all know, valuable public sculpture was stolen just blocks from the police station. The last time I was here, I asked for action. Today, I demand it. No economic development plans, no special events, no lovely public relations can mask that Waukegan is rife with crime. Waukegan used to have a perception problem. People believed it was unsafe to visit, shop, or live here. I've spent 18 years telling people what a great, livable Waukegan community Waukegan is. I can no longer make those statements. No solution is perfect. There will always be problems to be solved, but this council must take bold action and steps to manage the safety and quality of life of those of us who live, work, and pay taxes in the city. The city must leverage its assets through bonds, mortgages, whatever means necessary to manage crime and blight in the city. I must remark also that I have the best neighbors anyone could ask for, including Alderman Tempest. During this recent crime spree on my property, my neighbors rallied to my side, took care of my children, drove me around, came and boarded up the broken windows in my garage, waited with me while I spoke with the police, and even offered me the use of a car while mine was missing. I could not ask for better neighbors. I simply demand a better neighborhood. As the plaque says in the empty space that used to hold a lovely sculpture of a child reading a book, imagine that.
Thank you, ma'am. Next on the agenda are the minutes. Motion to approve minutes of July, correction, June 4th, 2012, regular meeting, executive session meetings. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Tempest. Any questions?
There's a roll call, man?
No.
Just a-
Voice, vote, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion is passed. Resolutions, proclamation, presentation, presentation, centennial celebration of our Northern Lake County YMCA. Is there a representative, I think there's a young lady representative here. When you have the, going to read the-
No, she's just making a presentation.
Okay. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. It's my distinct pleasure, having grown up in Waukegan, and in fact, having learned how to swim at the old Y on Clayton and Genesee, right down, county, rather, county and Clayton, to be here tonight and talk to you about our centennial. I'm not going to take too many minutes, because I know you have a lot on your agenda, but I thought I would cover a few highlights that maybe some of you even don't know yourselves. We had a lot of help in our research from the Waukegan Historical Society, as well as the now Lake County New Sun. They were also very helpful in our research. So the first building site was purchased at the northeast corner of Genesee and Clayton, and that was in June of 1911. That is currently where the Genesee Theater stands, and I don't know how many of you knew that. Construction was finished in 1912, when the Waukegan YMCA was first chartered. According to records from the Waukegan Historical Society and the Lake County New Sun, again, both of which have been very helpful to us, the board met for the first time under candlelight in May of 1913. In 1923, a new building site was purchased at the northwest corner of County and Clayton for a cost of $29,500. That building was dedicated in January of 1925 and housed residents until 1979. Finally, our current Northern Lake YMCA, which is located right here in Waukegan on Western Avenue, opened in June of 1987. It was expanded significantly with a grant from 1.5 million from OMC in 2006. So to mark our 100 years of nonprofit service to the community, we planned a fun festive event on Wednesday, July 18th, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. We certainly hope that you'll all be able to attend. We'll have a lot of different activities, many of which will focus on the number 100. We may have 100 sit-ups, we may have 100 meter dash, we may have a 100-meter sprint, we may have 100 hula hoop go-rounds. We'll encourage, obviously, physical activity, but you don't have to do all that, you can come and just have some refreshments if that would be your choice. We're also hoping for a good day and have some outdoor events, such as a tug-of-war, some water balloon fights, and some other healthy family fun. And last but not least, we'll have a special visitor, a unique rope warrior who performs jump rope stunts that most of us cannot imagine, and he's also very educational and teaches kids, again, about healthy living and jump roping in particular. I'd also like to thank David Motley. David's helping us, as is the Waukegan Historical Society, on our centennial committee. We welcome any other, other help. We're really not that far away from our event. We're putting it together quickly. Again, we are nonprofit. We do offer scholarships to the community for those that cannot afford our membership fees. And finally, to gear up for our centennial, we're looking for community support and really memories. We're looking for, maybe you grew up in the Y too, maybe your kids learned how to swim there, maybe you take your grandkids there today. So we're asking people to provide us with memories. At our centennial open house, we will have a wall of all the memories that we collect, and these memories can be, there's a card that I left, each of you should have gotten one of these. I'll leave some of these with David for the city, city hall, as well as, we'll have some of these cards at the house walk this weekend. So we'll have these cards, you can physically leave them at the Y, or we'll collect them from David. But better yet, we'd rather frankly prefer if you went onto our Facebook and liked our Lake County Family YMCA Facebook page, and simply write your remarks there, we'll gather them as well. So all the remarks that we get from now through July 9th will be put on a wall display in addition to a timeline at the event. So I have, I have about 100 really fascinating old pictures from the New Sun, and a couple more coming from the Historical Society. So we'll have a wall of pictures, and a timeline, and a wall of memories. So again, I hope that you're all able to make it. We're for youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility, and I think it's a great time for all of us to be part of future history by coming to our event. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for that? All right. Thank you very much, ma'am. We move on to committee, committed reports. Up first will be Finance Committee, Alderman Newsome.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance Committee met this evening. We have two items on the agenda. Item A, permission to issue a request for information for automated time and attendance services, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Tempest. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Motion is passed.
Item B, authorization to use bond proceeds for fire station renewal and replacement, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Conkin. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Motion is passed and carried.
And that would be it.
That's it for Finance Committee, Public Works Committee, Alderman Moiseo.
Yeah, item A, request permission to draft specifications for the TIF number one and TIF number four projects, and I so move. And if you have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Conkin.
This is to get some, some local works handed out. It would be, TIF one would be South Lake County Environmental remediation, it would be removed and closed for ten minutes of soil. The second one, TIF number one would be, oh, thank you, Alderman, would be DeMarcus Street, we got some debris down there that we need to get rid of, that would be in TIF one. And TIF four would be Genesee Street resurfacing, including water and sewer repairs, we need to get some of that stuff done down there. Tuck pointing of the exterior of the Genesee Theater. And in the future, we need to budget it for the installation of some new windows in the upper floors of the building. And the last one would be some parking garage repairs that we need to get shored up, so we don't keep having problems down there. So that is for TIF number one and TIF number four. And as I said, I so move. That would be a voice vote, too, it's just for specifications.
Motion by Alderman-
Me. Me.
Okay, okay. Please, already second. Any questions to the motion? All right, voice, voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion is passed.
Item B is to request permission to draft specifications for advertised for bids for ditch cleaning, and I so move. Second.
Motion by Alderman, Moiseo, second by Alderman Conkin. Any questions to the motion? Roll call? Those are bids, these are bids, voice?
All voice.
I apologize.
That's right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is passed.
Item C is to request permission to draft specifications for advertising bids for water main replacements, and if anybody wants, and I so move. Second.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Conkin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is passed.
There is a list also in your packet of where those are at. Item D is to request permission to draft specification advertised for bids for wiring and street lighting at Amherst Business Park, and I so move. Second.
Motion by Alderman, Moiseo, second by Alderman Conkin. Any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is passed. Item E.
And the item E, the last one would be a roll call, that's request permission to extend the water meter purchase contract, and I so move.
Second by Alderman Conkin.
Second.
Any questions to the motion?
I have a question.
Alderman Beedling.
I've just recently had a new water meter installed, and whenever I run the meter to run the water, I hear a (knocking) until the water charge is up, and then it stops. Is that normal?
I would probably say no. I'm not a water meter, I'm not, I'm not a water meter or plumber, but, expert or a plumber, but-
Sounds like air exchange.
You know.
The water works fine, but it makes a lot of noise that the old meter is getting so-
Thank you.
Sounds like that one needs to be repaired.
Yes.
Call the water department.
Thank you.
Or it just means that the meter is running and it is collecting its money.
That's right. Maybe, yeah.
Tina's happy. Any questions besides that? Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
I have one more item, I'm sorry, Alderman Cunningham. We had for discussion, there was a filmmaker from Northwestern who would like to use the cemetery as a prop to film Loyola's band. He'd like to use it as a prop, but I said he'd have to probably get special permission from Shep and Alderman Tempest. Maybe he could, maybe he could use them in the filmmaking. I know you're down there quite often, Coach, you'll probably run into them.
This is looking pretty good.
Yeah.
Said we need some tombstones straightened out, and I once mentioned, you got too many roads cutting through there. We need to make a cemetery or lots for persons that are cremated smaller size, less price, maybe, you know, a little bargain price, but we need to develop that graveyard to its fullest extent, and we're not doing it. We really do.
That's it, Alderman Conkin.
Right, there is. Any more questions to that? All right, next on the, on the agenda is Public Safety Committee. One item, Public Sa-, Alderman Conkin.
Thank you. The City of Waukegan requested authorization to adopt an ordinance amending the Waukegan Codes of Ordinances in Chapter 15, offenses regarding panhandling. It seems aggressive panhandling has become somewhat troublesome recently in the city, and the city had no ordinance on its books, and that directly addresses the problem of aggressive and illegal panhandling. Ordinance will contribute significantly toward addressing this activity, and the ordinance has been redrafted to address constitutional issues. Those constitutional issues were brought up by Alderman Rivera and Corporation Counsel Newton Finn. So the Public Safety has met and discussed, and the Public Safety Committee recommends that the proper city officials be authorized to adopt an ordinance amending the Waukegan Code of Ordinances, Chapter 15, offenses regarding panhandling, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Conkin, second by Alderman Tempest. Any further questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Motion is passed and carried.
Thank you, that's all I have.
No old business, no reports or communications, new business, recommended action by Corporation Counsel. Item A, approval payroll dated June 13th, 2012, an amount of $1,287,089. his brother has, has been a pillar, particularly in the south side of Waukegan. So if you get an opportunity to see Alderman Copeland, please send your condolences out to him and his family. Obviously, the heat, you know, a lot of times, we're doing our busy days, but when it's hot like this, I would all ask that we stop in, particularly have our senior neighbors, see if they're welcome, see if they're okay, and things like that, or just make a phone call. It's very, very hot out there, folks, so please, please be careful. And I know I'm not doing any grass cutting at all, so don't cut your grass during the hot season. All right? Other than that, that's all for me. Thank you.
Alderman Conkin.
Thank you. As many of my colleagues like to keep reminding me, I'm the only raider on the council of Waukegan West High School. And because I was a newly raider, new raider at the time when the school was formed, the varsity coach kept game balls, and I'm just happy to say, and I want to say thank you publicly to Mr. Jerikian, he gave me one of the game balls that represented the first time Waukegan West beat Waukegan East.
Oh, God, oh, my goodness.
1976, my junior year in high school, so I just wanted to make sure everybody up here saw that. I get a game ball, I don't know if anybody else has, but that's all. Thank you, Mr. Jerikian, thank you very much.
Alderman Moiseo.
Just a couple of things. I had recently talked to Dave Marion about it. He knows, everybody knows, we've got a lot of vacant properties in, in the town. Somewhere around 1,400, somewhere in that number. And, and right now, there's, Dave's best estimate, there's only about 25 with grasses that has not been cut. So I think hats off to him for working as hard and the staff working for, trying to get that. We could hire a full-time staff just to take care of that, and he's pretty much taking that with his staff on and try to get that taken care of, so I'd like to say my hat's off to you, Dave, for taking care of that. That's an arduous task. I tell residents, it's not always that easy. First of all, you've got to find out who owns the thing, and that can take a month sometimes, if not longer, to try to find out who owns it, to hold them responsible to get a cut. And I've had some residents, I know we've had other wards where residents step up. Now if they call me, I say, "Well, I can get a cut pretty quick if you can find some neighbors that will cut the front grass." And we get that done, and then they maintain the front grass, and we leave the back lawn so that we can still find them. So hopefully, we can get some movement on that. The other thing, I'd also like to take hats off to Chief Greathouse and the Police Department. I've had some incidents in my ward lately that have been a little crazy, and the police have, have been right on it, and my patrol officer is Officer White, and we've gotten some closure on them. And I think that's what residents want. I think most of the people in the city understand that things happen, and there's not just one section of the city where crazy things and crime happen, but it's all over. It's also, if you listen to, it's all over Lake County, too. And we've been able to get some closure on some things that have gone on in our ward, and I want to say hats off to Chief Greathouse and all of the men and women in the Police Department for doing a great job. And as I've always said, and I've said it before, and I'll say it again, the Police Department is what holds this city together. Alderman Tempest has said it many times, it's what is what is holding this city together, and I'd like to thank them. That's it.
Alderman Beedling.
I'd like to add to that. Our policemen do have a very difficult job. I'm, I'm hoping to get some cases from our risk assessment manager. Our, our police quite often, when they chase a criminal down, well, you know, when you tackle somebody, you're going to get a scrape or a cut, or maybe even a broken bone. Well, in the end, the city gets sued for these things, even though the person's a criminal and was running from the police, the taxpayers get sued and we have to pay for that, which makes a policeman's job very difficult. I'm, how, how do you chase somebody down without hurting them? I don't know. Especially if it's on pavement. I think it was Shakes, you know, regarding the grass? The banks own these properties, and the banks are very difficult to deal with. Our building commissioner can attest to that, and I think it was Shakespeare that said, "Kill all the lawyers." I'd like to add the bankers to that list. Thank you.
There was a comment earlier about, about crime. If I'm not mistaken, didn't we just add some officers? Danny, did, three? And I'm sorry, I shouldn't say Danny, that's Chief Greathouse. Chief Greathouse, didn't we just add, how many officers, we just added three? Three, three brand-new officers? So, ma'am, I know, I know it's very difficult for you. I understand that, but we, we are trying to bring that number back up so we can get to those, those satisfactory rates, but as you can see, they are working, and working extremely hard. I know we can't be in all places at all times, but we are doing what we can, and we do appreciate you, we're, you're not falling on deaf ears here. We're, we're still kind of working, kind, we are working to try to make sure our city is secure. I just want to point that out for you, and I, I see the emotion with you. So we're with you with this, ma'am, believe me. Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Newsome.
I'd like to add to that, thank the chief and the 5th Ward Officer Orozco for all his help, and I've had some areas in my ward that have needed some attention, and the police has stepped up to take care of that last weekend around the clock. So they are working diligently on wherever they can be there, extend it as far as they can extend, and I appreciate all the help that they're giving us. They can only do so much, but they're doing an excellent job, and I want to let you know that I appreciate what you're doing over there in the 5th Ward around the stores. So thanks, and let the officers know, I appreciate it very much.
Alderman Tempest.
Thank you. As I hear, we talk, there's four things that I think the city needs very important, police, you've got to have a good water supply, you've got to get the garbage picked up, and you have to have paramedics and a fire department. Those are the main ingredients to keep the town running safely.
Thank you. I need a woman on my side, I guess, that's why they put one on each side, keep me going right. So, again, I said, there's four ingredients that we need. Police, water, garbage picked up, my God, you need that, and a fire department with good paramedics. I mean, that's the heart of the city. Yes, we can go on to do more things, like I see on the audience here, like the Downtown Association, trying to keep things moving, and desperately trying to get more funds. Waukegan Chamber of Commerce working, help the businessmen. However, I also, as I see the community and the problems facing it, and it's true, we did cut back on the Police Department, we did, and we really need to take another look at that. If we can possibly get a few more officers, with it, possibly you could amend the appropriation ordinance, I don't know how, quite to do that, but I think it can be done. But I know we just added three more, but we ought to maybe try to add a few more, because we surely, the backup calls, I know what's happening. The backups are, are pretty severe sometimes, waiting for a policeman to come. It's, it's, it's almost tragic sometimes. They do prioritize them, and yes, some calls will get there when we can, will take the report. The window was broken in last night. Well, if they don't need them, they're right now, they get there within a half an hour to take the report. It's not going to change just the evidence, if, if there's any there. So I would like us to kind of seriously look at that. I think we need to seriously look at our police force and where we're going, and if we can somehow adjust the budget to take care of that. And that's all I have to say today. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman May.
Thank you. I want to take a moment to thank Landscape Concepts Management. This past weekend, they donated 200 flaps of flowers to the City of Waukegan. I would like to name George Mark Hootsis from Landscape Concepts, Chris Seagren, who's a committee chairperson with the Waukegan Main Street, and Nata Finn with Greentown Waukegan, who within a very 24-hour period of time assembled volunteers, and we spent a Saturday with, we dubbed it Plant the Town. And if you drive down Genesee Street, you'll notice how beautiful it looks, and the, we really want to thank Landscape Concepts for their generous donations. I also want to talk about the beach. As many people know, we've struggled with what to do with our beach since 2010, when we lost all of our lifeguards. I, thanks to groups like Friends of Waukegan Beach, FIST, Waukegan Harbor Citizens Advisory Group, and the City of Waukegan, we've been able to keep it clean, we've been able to keep it open, and maintain, which I, one of our greatest assets, in my opinion, as we all know, the greatest asset of Waukegan. As we move forward, I want to remind everyone that garbage is really your responsibility. So there's no garbage cans on the beach any longer, and I think that should be okay with all of us. You carry it down there, you should be able to carry it back to your, to the parking lot. We're still offering you receptacles in the parking lot where you can place your trash, but the beach is now a carry-in, carry-out facility.[1267.66]